...storm of secrets after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, City Manager.
Two items on consent agenda for Council to contemplate.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
For a second. Okay, also good for a second, any discussion? Seeing none?
Yes, sir.
There can't be any discussion.
Unless you want to pull it out.
You don't want to pull it out.
Without evidence?
No.
Okay, so all is in favor, reach your hand. Opposed, like sign. Okay, item number eight, information discussion items. And City Manager?
First is a presentation by US 67 Study Team. We have Mr. Vicky Cross still here to update us on the corridor master plan.
So, I think I'm just remembering. HGMI. So, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. As you know, I'm Vicky Cross, I work with Kleidman, but I'm a consultant for TechStop. We've been working on this US 67 study for two years. So, this is kind of our wrap up and hopefully our final meeting with the City Council, given that we are preparing our draft plan. And I'm going to be presenting a few updates regarding where we are in the process, and then just provide a brief presentation on what the final findings are specifically for the city of Alpine, and just the next steps regarding the public comment period. So, I think in your package, you might have received this notice. This is basically letting you know that the plan is online already. It's a pretty lengthy plan, so that's why we didn't make copies for everybody, because it's about 200 pages. So, I'm going to sh- yeah. Is it time reading? It's actually really, like personally, like I think it's a very well drafted plan, especially because it's very attractive to the eye, and I'll show a few things related to that. So, the plan itself, this is the cover, you'll see the logos for the three cities for Presidio, Marfa, and Alpine. Like I said, it's about 200 pages, the actual plan, but then there's this big set of appendices, which is about 600 pages. But a lot of the details that people asked us about is in those appendices. And this is just a concept of all the appendices. What you see here is a lot of data about hydro, CAD information, the freight condition. So, there's a big, a chapter that's about freights that has a summary, but in the appendix you see what we call meadows. So, it's a pretty lengthy document, just the appendix itself. This is the website. I'm sorry that it's not very clear, but basically, we've had this website for a long time. If you just Google, and this is for anybody from the public, if you want to see the document, if you just Google TechStop US 67, this comes up. You'll see a lot of links to the different meetings that we've had, but at the very top, you'll see the actual corridor master plan link. That's the easiest way to get access to this document. And I'll just briefly go over the chapters. So, we have an introduction chapter, we have a whole chapter on public involvement. That's what we did with, you know, public meetings, or the corridor working group, bus chores. We have a chapter on goals and objectives, existing conditions. We have a small chapter on freight conditions, multi-moto and complete streets. This is for pedestrians and cyclists, some ideas that came out of that. And then we have probably one of the two most important chapters is Chapter Seven. So, these are like basically what we call alternatives. These are recommendations of what came out for all the communities, what was chosen for different intersections. And then the implementation chapter is really, okay, now that you have all of this information, what can you as a community do with this data? And not just you as the cities, but also the counties and TechStop. We also have, this just shows, for example, just an example of the introduction. Right here, in the public meetings, we had posters that said, okay, how many crashes are along the highway? This just shows, you know, in, within seven years, 878 crashes, 35 were incapacitating, and 12 fatal crashes along the corridor. So, the data is just presented in a different way from what you've seen in the past. This is from the public involvement section, so this just shows, you know, we had a master contact list, we did three bus tours, we had seven corridor working groups. This is a big set of stakeholder group that we try to meet with constantly. And of course, the steering committee, that's the mayors and the county judges from each of the communities and the counties. And then the public meetings. And then we had a few focus group meetings as well. And then this just shows, again, just an example of how data is displayed, showing in this case that the majority of the accidents on US 67 are roadway departure, as opposed to rear ends or head-on collisions. This is also from the existing conditions report. Because there was a lot of analysis done along the entire corridor, again, this is 144 miles, you know, we, we looked at all the bridges, you know, what's the condition of the bridges, the condition of the culverts, the guardrail, so all of this data is all in that report, and specific mention of where work needs to be done. And then this goes into the alternatives. This is what I'm going to focus on in the presentation. There's 11 specific intersections along the whole corridor. For each intersection, there are specific suggestions that we recommended, and then the public basically had a chance to rank those suggestions. And then this final example of the implementation chapter is about funding, and I think this is really helpful for communities, because here you'll see, for example, the TASA, the Transportation Alternative Set-A-Side Program, which is the Safe Routes to Schools program. So, there's a little summary of how, what kind of funding can be garnered through this program. But in addition to that, there's other categories of how funding can be associated with different recommendations on the plan. And then there's a whole component related to health impacts. You probably didn't see this a lot in the public meeting, but the reason for that is that we had to have all the alternatives suggested in order for us to do a health analysis on things that can be done for improving the health of the communities through transportation plan. So, this could be, you know, adding shade, adding trees, and how different things help the community. I'm not going to go through all of these comments. This is really just basic information that I've shown before about what the corridor master plan is. Specifically, in this section, you know, it's about identifying short, long, and medium transportation improvements to improve safety, improve traffic flow. Again, we started in the summer of 2017, and we're wrapping up now. There's a lot of different local governments, advocacy groups, nonprofits, the freight community, the school districts, that were invited to a lot of the public meetings, but also the stakeholder meetings. This just shows the three core groups, but of course, the public, the steering committees, the corridor working group, and then focus group members. Specifically, we met with the art community, and the landowners, and the environmental focus group. This just shows the attendance from the very first public meeting, and the plan, you get a summary of all of this information. In Alpine, the first meeting was held in May 2018. We had about 130 participants. A lot of comments were received at this meeting. And then we go to the second public meeting, which was November 2018. We had about 60 people, so a lot less people came to that public meeting. And then the third public meeting, which was done this year in June, we had about, again, 60 people here in Alpine. And this was one of the most important meetings for us, because this is where the public got to choose different alternatives for the intersections. One thing that did come out of the whole study, and this is a very controversial topic, is about alternate routes, or what people, you know, consider a bypass. Because that was not specifically part of the study itself, we are working on this roadmap, which we are handing out to the communities, and it's going to be an appendix, part of the appendix and the public involvement. And basically, what you'll see here is that it's going to be a document that tells you what steps you should take for the city and the counties to start having a conversation, if they want to, with TechStop about alternate routes in the community, including timeframes, you know, what the costs are, and pros and cons of having an alternate route. And I think also case studies of different communities that have done this. So, now going into the corridor concepts, again, I'm going to go fast through here. So, there's a lot of different concepts that were suggested. Each of them are either a core concept or an alternative. There's a map that shows where different improvements are suggested, so whether it's an intersection, or where there's signalization improvements, or passing lanes that are added. This is for Presidio. Those are the intersections. This is Marfa, only two intersections, so you'll see the yellow dots here that were chosen. And then we have Alpine. Alpine has the most intersections, where there are specific recommendations, and that's what I'm going to focus on. So, let me go right through here. Okay, so, I have hidden everything for Marfa and for Presidio, because it's a lot of flights, but I'm going to focus on Alpine. So, these are the intersections. The first location is FM 1703 and US 67. This is the way that it looks right now. One thing here, what I'm going to go through here is just going to point out what the recommended alternative is. On the actual plan, you have the three alternatives, but the one that was chosen, just so that you don't think that it's lost, and that this is the final, say, this is our recommendation. And basically, what they do here is close this area right here, just so that there is more free-flow traffic, and it creates also a two-way turn lane here. And then this is on the side, it says, okay, if, this is a recommendation that was also chosen by the public, it's noted here. And again, this is to address safety issues. So, that's before and after. The second location is Orange Street and Sol Ross Avenue intersections, and this is the way that it currently is. This intersection, one of the big issues here is that it has too many intersections and too many access points, so when engineers look at this, it's kind of a problematic intersection. So, in the future, if there's an increase in a lot of traffic here, the recommendation was, oh, and also this street intersects at a dangerous angle, that's what this comment is about. So, basically, it changes this area right here, so you see that right now. It goes straight, but this creates a little safer angle, so it's realigned. It also closes down this street, so that there is less access points, and it closes down Sol Ross. Again, this is just the recommendation. We've had this recommendation for a long time, and there were other alternatives that were suggested. There is no funding. This is, this is just the plan. And if there are, with any of these alternatives, if there's ever a point where the city wants to do an improvement to an intersection, this is kind of some background work that has already been done, and there's still a lot of engineering that goes into what actually happens with this intersection. So, again, this is the public's recommended alternative as well. The third intersection is at Sol Ross. So, again, this is a pretty interesting, a two-way street here, and if you recall, if you went to the public meetings, there was roundabouts that were suggested for this area, but the one that was suggested was a pedestrian ring, and basically turning this road into a one-way road. So, it would no longer be a two-way road, and then there's access here to turn around. So, if you're coming east on 67, you go straight, you could no longer turn left here, you would have to go this way and turn around. One of the problem areas is here with the stop sign, and just people not knowing, should I stop, should I not stop? But this, again, this was also the public's recommended alternative, and it also creates this little round circle that allows for pedestrians to walk through here. And in this case, I'll mention this one, because here there's also a note that says it doesn't require any right-of-way for you to do these type of improvements. There was an alternative D that was also considered, and what this would do, this is a conversation that you would have with Sol Ross, and somebody from Sol Ross mentioned that if there was a possibility of them donating part of this land, so that the alignment of this road is different. So, if you see here compared to here, it just realigns the road, so that there's better visibility here. And I think this would be, continue to be a two-way. So, that's just a different consideration. And then the fourth location is about complete streets. So, again, this is for you balance sidewalks, and pedestrians, and cyclists. In all the communities, this is kind of controversial, because you don't want to get rid of parking, but people also ask for bicycle lanes. So, this is the existing condition right now. You just have a sidewalk, you have parking, you have your travel lanes, and this is basically an option for putting in a bike lane, but also maintaining some of the parking on both sides. So, or on one side, I think. Again, just considerations for Hall and Avenue and Avenue E. And this was also the public's recommended alternative. And then there are some suggestions for one-way street configurations. Again, this is for safety issues, so there are certain streets here that were recommended. 15th Street recommended to go one way, 14th the other way, 13th this way. So, again, some of the issues here are specifically just to improve and have public access for pedestrians. And then, this is the same for 6th Street, 5th, and 4th Street. So, this is a one-way street. This would remain a two-way street, and then this would remain a one-way street. Okay? And, and then there's specific improvements for traffic, like if there is an increase in traffic, or when do you need to put signalization at specific intersections? So, in this case, you know, at this intersection, it says, okay, signalize in intersection, convert to an always-stop control. So, there's different suggestions, and this is basically to alleviate, hey, if there's like a 10-minute wait in traffic, these are some suggestions. And then this is Cherry Street and US 67. Recommendation, I'm going to go pretty fast. 11th Street at U Street. Again, this is just for operational issues, adding a left turn lane. And then for rural locations, there, this is the intersection where you go to Fort Stockton. A suggestion there, rather than the circles that were suggested, this was the recommended alternative, you basically would change this into a one-way, so people would, if you're going towards Fort Stockton, you'd have to come to this stop and turn left, as opposed to using this ramp. And again, this is for safety control. And then there's some suggestions for the I-10 US 67, basically allowing this entrance ramp to have safer acceleration designed. And then for bicyclists, complete streets, having a gap between rumble strips. And then, this is for rural locations, this is specifically between Marfa and Presidio, since there is no rest area, basically different recommendations for putting parking stalls, actually putting midterm picnic benches, and then a full-term parking refuge, vehicle refugered. And then this is kind of my last slide. This is thinking outside the box, because there was a lot of interest in trails and cyclists. This is a recommendation for using the Texas Pacifico, the new railroad that's being opened between Alpine and Presidio, and using that as a possible trail option in the future. This is if there is interest at some point, or using the pipeline easement for a trail as well. So, and again, if one funding is allocated to these projects, each alternative will be further reviewed and discussed through the project development. And, that's it. The most important thing, if you leave with anything, is that you have until December 9th. That's when we close the public comment period, so it's about a month that we're giving. So, if you do have time and you're interested in looking at the document, go online, look at it, send us our comments, and then we hope to have the final plan complete by the end of December. Do you have any questions? I know that was kind of long.
How many trucks do you anticipate are going to be coming through here?
That's a good question, and I think Rick will address that, because that is a follow-up study, that's more detailed analysis for freight. So, we don't have a specific number right now.
I have a specific number, it's called a lot.
I know. You have an estimate?
I do have an estimate.
I've got the numbers here.
Okay.
It's a different study.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you very much, Rick.
Oh, thank you.
So, I do have some questions, Vicky.
Yes.
So, assuming everything, the comments come in December 10th, the report gets closed out, who is the decision-makers relative to funding, and who's going to make the decisions relative to that funding? Because what you talked about is all TechStop property, not city property, even though they're going through the city.
Right. So, part of the funding, again, each of the recommended funding sources, a lot of it is through TechStop, but a lot of those funding sources also require the city to go for some funds, so it would be in collaboration with the cities or the counties. So, I only reference the Safe Routes to Schools, even though it's TechStop funding, you can't, the, TechStop is not going to come tell you where to put the bike lanes or the sidewalks. So, I think for some of those fundings, it's, it's really a conversation that Chris will have with the cities to see what, what wants. And the cities, I think they should also, hey, out of all this, we really want this one thing. But there really isn't a timeframe that we put on the map, like you need to do this by a certain date, other than the recommendation and the implementation plan.
So, Eric, I think, given this is going to settle out, December comments, the final report out for the first year, we might want a discussion with Chris sometime in the March, April timeframe, to say, now that we've got a report with recommendations, how do we go support what Chris is going to do from a budget standpoint, or whatever his plan would be for the dollars and cents, since this is all the TechStop intersections, so that we can lay in and note out, because Chris is, we get to sit back and talk to the city behind this thing, so we'll support that as the larger funding gets allocated. I know there's, you know, there's the Strategic Texas Transportation Study, that's one of the three under way, and we're starting to allocate resources for that, and we need to help make sure Chris gets a space.
And Chris couldn't be here today, he's in Austin, he had to fly out today, so.
He's having those discussions.
Yeah. So, but it is, I think the plan, at the end of the day, it's, not a lot of rural areas have this kind of plan, so it's a really good set of priorities and recommendations that, even if Chris says, no, we're not going to fund this, you know, it's something that you could take to your legislators and say, hey, this study, this came out as a priority or is an important need, so hopefully you have support for that. Is there something else?
Considering the other potential funding sources out there, will you or anybody provide a list so that our City Manager and the grant writer can know who to contact, where to log into, to start the process?
Yeah. So, the chapter, the implementation chapter should have at least the list of the funding sources, but if there are specific comments, like if you tell us, hey, it would be nice to have a comment on this, then we can probably, if it's not there already, I don't remember if it is, I think there's part of it, but that way it could be added to the plan itself, and you probably, you know, you have the need for that, but the other communities could also benefit from that. So, especially in the comment period, that way our team can work on adding that to the plan, as part of the plan. But that, I'll note that on my, on my notes.
Any more comments?
So, Vicky, you've been working on this for the last two years, and I know you've got other things to do. What is your involvement going forward?
Well, the freight study, that's kind of a component of this, this end, and we, well, we'll still maintain our office in Presidio, and I don't know how much more our involvement's going to be with this. I know that there's projects coming up for more freight studies at a state level, but with this one, we'll probably continue to help small communities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you.
Good, which is, then leads into the next one. So, as I mentioned at two City Council meetings ago, there are three studies underway. Vicky just walked through the 67 corridor study. Another study is the Presidio Regional Freight Mobility Study Plan. I attended a meeting a couple, three weeks ago here, there was one down in Presidio, a meeting here, sponsored by TechStop, and then there was a meeting last Friday in San Angelo, sponsored really by the San Angelo Chamber. As they're motivated to have a good study worked their way through, and I thought it would, we'll have to come back and share with Council the summary from that. The, I want to give credit to the Presidio, get my words right here. The Presidio, really the management district that they have down there, they've got a lot of money behind what they're trying to do, because they're trying to develop what's going on in Presidio. I've got some slides that I will show that I have from the presentation, but I'd like to just use this chart to cover the highlights. As I said, there's the study. It's a three-year plan to look at freight mobility and smart economic development. It's going to be consistent with the 67 corridor study and the broader transportation master plan that's underway, so those are the three studies. Rail traffic, to your point, caution, Karen, expected to increase to 4,000 containers by 2022, and up to 18,000 containers by 2029. So, that's in the next decade. The reason this is important is to think about what the implications are from an overall transportation perspective, and I'll, I'll show some maps here coming up. Truck traffic could go up to 8,000 additional trucks by, by 2039. So, it's another reason to be thinking ahead about what goes on, so we can make sure we get in the bucket from a funding standpoint, thinking about it. One of the major drivers thinking about this is Topo Obampo to Dallas Transportation. So, for me, it was an interesting experience from where the heck is Topo Obampo. It is on the west side of the Gulf of Mexico. So, I'm familiar, being originally from California, got to the Gulf of Mexico, was not familiar with that as a port. It is a huge, deep-water port that really starts the opportunity to increase traffic from Asia, and not go through Long Beach, where all of it goes right now, and then go by rail, but go directly from Asia to Topo Obampo, up through the South Orient Express, which is what Texas Pacifico, the rail they're working, go through Presidio, and then eventually go through Alpine, on its way to San Antonio, to Dallas, and markets out there. That's the main reason they've been so focused on getting the railroad bridge in place to be able to accommodate that, a huge economic engine. The fundamental issue is rail and truck routes through Alpine, this estate are being engaged in that process. We'd rather be part of that in terms of from a planning standpoint, rather than have us, have it be done to us, so to speak. And as I mentioned before, you know, our game plan is to host and engage, you know, Alpine is part of this discussion, Stephanie's back there, part of the, she was over at the meeting as well, representing Brewster County, and really looking at the safety standpoint. It's great to have you here, Stephanie, because, you know, as we work our way closely with what goes on in Brewster County, as we get additional loads going through here, what are the types of loads, what are the issues, what are the potential safety issues going to happen? But that really is the summary. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, but ultimately, we have to think about what this looks like. Let's go on to the next slide. When you think about what's going on with the freight mobility study, this is what it's looking at, is a reminder, here you have the water going through, we've got Brewster County, you know, thinking about what's going to come across at OJ up to Presidio, but as you'll see on the next slide- you'll see on the next slide, this is significantly bigger than what's going to happen from just, you know, from Chihuahua and the economic development there, it's all the way through, including Asia. Let's go on the next slide. So this just gives you some sense of the preliminary traffic study, so this is the data they got, working with Texas Pacifico, and what's going down, down south in terms of the number of trains and the containers, you see the runout into 2039, 2049. If the port on the west coast grows, like they're hoping it will, these will be small numbers. Now, a little bit more about the bridge. The bridge is supposed to be up and operational by July of this next year, it's going to slip a couple months, but it eventually is going to start rolling, and Texas Pacifico is working real hard to get the rail upgraded from Presidio all the way up through our neck of the woods, that will increase the train speeds, that's going to take some time. They've gone back to their parent company, looking for $100 million to upgrade the rail, and they've got to get those dollars allocated. So initially, right now, if you get a full train, it's going to be running 25 miles an hour along the rail, they want to increase that significantly. Another driver is, remember, we got the rock quarry north of the city, who is actually pushing rock and sand and gravel north, but you know, Texas Pacifico really wants to grow this in a significant way. In my view, rail is the way to go, but that's only part of the question. Let's go on the next slide, which really then talks about the truck transportation, and you see the sorts of products projected, you know, coming out of, through Presidio and Ojaiaga. There's a huge element on the part of Department of Homeland Security, Customs, Border Patrol to significantly upgrade that border processing, so they can move a lot more product, give you an idea, produce pecans, livestock. You see the numbers growing, fresh produce, a significant increase over the next 20 to 30 years, and you see the runout in terms of trucks, you know, just shy of 800, you know, but 10 years from now, four times that, and go out beyond that another time and a half or two. So it's really about, you know, the opportunity for commerce going back and forth. So that's really the numbers, now let's go on, talk to this bigger picture, which is this slide that talks about, again, I talked about where the port is, here's a picture of the port, it is a deep-water port, and you see the rail, the red there, that's the rail line coming up all the way through, so, you know, they're really motivated to be able to go drive that in a big way. Now let's go on to the next slide, because it shows the heat map, and what a heat map does is just look at economic opportunity. So here you think about what's going on from Asia, today things go up through Long Beach, if they can get through the port down on the west coast of Mexico, think about the distance from Long Beach up in this neck of the woods, or coming through Mexico, it's the same distance, but a huge competitive battle that will go on between Union Pacific and what goes on with Texas Pacifico. So the economic forces will have to work their way through, but nonetheless, it's going to be train or truck, and we just have to deal with intersection going through, which makes all the more important the discussion about, what's our strategy? You saw in the Alpine Avalanche a couple weeks ago, an article that says, hey, when the trucks hit Marfa, just tell them to turn left. And my view, you saw my response, maybe you saw my response, a little bit later, that says, not the viable plan. Would you like them to turn left? Yeah, but the fact is, when you look at the cost of a truck, the truck cost per mile is a dollar forty cents per mile. It's that simple. I don't care if you're going uphill, downhill, around turns, or whatever, and the distance that you go from Marfa up through to Fort Stockton, going through Alpine, or if you go Marfa to Fort Stockton, going up through Van Horn, is a hundred mile difference. I can guarantee you, there's not a trucker in the world who's going to spend an extra 40 bucks so he doesn't have to drive the truck to Alpine. That's the way I want to go. So going back to the dialogue, I think we have an important discussion with Alpine to talk about, and that's why I want to have this dialogue over the next year or so, because this study finishes in December 2020. We want to make our input in about what the recommendations are for trucks, how to make sure we get the dollars associated with rail for safety and security on the rail system, but also be able to go work the trucks. So that's the background, I'm happy to respond to any questions, but the city is definitely in the pipeline to go work.
Councilor Stevens, a lot of people understand that Alpine is about the same distance to Topo Obampo as it is to Houston.
No question.
And that most of the oil that's being produced in the Permian Basin is being shipped to the Gulf Coast for export to Asia.
Yep.
Which is the wrong way to get to Asia, and so we talked about economics, it's going to end up going straight to the west coast of Mexico.
Yes.
And we happen to be there, so we have to plan.
Yeah.
Do it in a wise way, and keep our quality life up, the global economic forces are going to happen.
Yeah, great point, Rod, and I think, and I know as soon as I say this, I'll get myself in trouble, when you're moving large liquid products, you have the choice of buy-ship, going from Houston back around through the canal, to the Panama Canal, that's expensive, or you can go across rail by railcar, that's also expensive, or the other thought is, look for pipeline number two, that will start heading that direction, usually controversial, I understand, but I think that's the discussion, that's all part of this freight mobility transportation study, what makes sense from our perspective, where do we want to go work, and there'll be those who, hey, they're not in Alpine, I think we would rather be in the situation of, how do we get for what's a benefit to Alpine in a way that makes good economic sense as opposed to just say no? Because in my view, just say no is not going to sort itself out.
Those of us from Presidio look at Presidio growing into a pretty major export of energy port from Texas to Mexico.
Yeah, and I think frankly...
And then the second one would be agricultural products.
Yeah, one of the big benefits that Alpine gets out of this, and I think we all agree it's nice that oil is north of I-10, same with natural gas, the benefit for us is, what are we trying to sell? Tourism. People want to come here, people, in fact, that was one of the big discussions that came up in San Angelo the other day, they said, one of the nice things about Alpine, where there are people who are north of I-10, anywhere along that corridor, they want to get out of that hustle and bustle, they want to come visit us, so I think there's real opportunities for an economic development standpoint, and the strategy we have as a city to continue to go work at is the right one. We just got to make sure we provide the right infrastructure to keep us safe, at the same time take advantage of all the tourism dollars when people want to come to Alpine.
And some of the managers and other workers in the oil field in Mount Oray and Pecos have decided it's much nicer to live in Alpine, immune from Alpine, than peril their lives by taking the traffic to the business.
Yep, so more of the top.
And you can see, you know, all three phases going together.
Oh, you have a question?
Because years ago, it was proposed that we have an alternative truck route, and that was turned down, well, reality is here now.
Yep.
You know, so what are we going to do? Are we going to sit here again and procrastinate, and then it's going to pass us? And you also got to look at the cost, what it's going to cost, like, say, for instance, right now, hypothetically, right now versus another 20 years from now? You know, so it's expensive, and with the increase of truck traffic coming through Alpine, it's not going to work, our streets are not designed for it. So you'd actually have to completely rebuild it, and they're not either, and they're not even widening the vaults over.
Right.
So it all ties into something, we really need to really consider it, you know, we've talked about it for the last two years in that first study that I was on, and that was one of the alternatives, Rod, like Ricky said, it was like controversial, said, no, you know, not through here, but, you know, what are the alternatives? That's what we got to look at.
You were discussing, you said we were going to have, you were going to present this to Alpine, I'm assuming you mean the city and citizens, correct?
Yeah, we're down in the city, we'll start after the first year.
Get some flyers, I'll pay for the city.
I'm sorry?
Get some flyers, I'll pay for the city.
We'll start with that, so we just, we've got some work to do to go sort through that, I think from Eric's perspective, he's been working hard to get the baseline set from where we're from a budget standpoint, recalcitrant, working in terms of fixing a number of things, and after the first year, you'll start seeing us go talk about this and influence the study, and we're directly engaged in it.
And our role, like Text Doc, what we want to do with this, with the freight plan, is provide data, and there, we're researching a lot of international data, trans search of freight, the meaning that you referenced, this is for the rail line, but there's a lot of data that we're investigating for trucks and intermodal, so if there's trains that move products from the train to the trucks, you know, what is that going to look like? So I think that once the city starts building their, you know, path of meetings and whatnot, our role is to provide the data that can help inform your decisions.
Yeah, I have another question, is El Paso also being considered as an alternative route?
Well, not really, well, they have, so, Matt Stevens mentioned the three studies, the big one, the big statewide, it's called the Border Master Transportation Plan, and that's looking at all the border cities in the entire state of Texas, and El Paso, Laredo, all of them have a big planning effort, Presidio is getting their specific planning effort. It's always been in the back burner, but now it's seen as an emerging port, port of entry, so El Paso does have their own, you know, information and their own, but they don't have the rail line that's already there, they don't have the Texas Pacifico.
Presidio has been given its own designation on text, and that's one of the fast point studies, so it's going to get attention.
I mean, it's here, you know, like it or not, but we need to take control of it.
Yep.
You know, y'all have done a great job in the work, all the work you've done from beginning to, you know, to right now, as far as, you know, letting the public get involved, get public comments, before, it's never happened, Text Doc just came in, boom, there it is.
And just to commend the city of Alpine, and all the communities, Presidio and Marfa as well, that the amount of people that come to the public meetings compared to a public meeting of this same effort in El Paso, you'll get 30 or 40 people in El Paso, but Presidio and Alpine and Marfa, they get a lot of participation, so I think Text Doc was very impressed that your interest and your care for your community was pretty, pretty big, and I think that's something that Text Doc is continuing to give presentations about our effort to other states, not just within Texas, but other efforts in rural communities, because it was pretty impressive to get participation and maintain that engagement, so...
One thing to keep in mind also is that, in getting prepared for the planning efforts for Alpine in the future, is we should start looking as to what is the holistic planning or idea or concept of what they're doing in Mexico. Look at Ojaiaga, look at Taldama, look at Chihuahua, look at all the other activities in between Chihuahua and Topo Obampo, that's one area, because it's interesting about the planning concept, Mexico, the US, Mexico is more holistic, they look at the planning on a larger scale, and if we look here, the, we have a potential to maybe make Alpine not so much a large hub like Albuquerque or El Paso, some of the other cities, but maybe a small hub where we can have, yes, a throughway for the transport of goods and products, but at the same time tourism, the airport, increased service, it's got all that potential, it's just a matter of, what are our neighbors doing?
So we're on to that point, I pulled out six charts out of the 200-page bracket, that means five hours, we're through on Friday, so a lot of that detail is there, to Ricky's point, part of the tasking that she got was to go continue to gather data, that's got to be part of the bigger picture, but I didn't want to go through all that detail, this is all about providing the top level, so please do your homework.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky.
Thank you. Thank you.
Everybody, Stevens, President of the Association, Jim is next, Jim, speak.
It's a tough act to follow. Alpine Downtown Association, we've got quite a few things going on, with one of our first goals, Councilor Stevens helped us develop, branding, and we're seeing some evidence of it right now with the new banners going up, Chris, they have our Heart of Alpine logo on them, and they give directions, I think they're only available up now, I think we might more, right?
There's 18 of them.
Eighteen, yeah, pointing out various, various, and this is, we, people need this, they come to Alpine, they don't, they don't know what parking is, they don't know registration, they don't, they don't follow these things, like the veto parking, who knows if that's public parking unless it's signed, you know, so the design will be very helpful, and, and, yeah, has to look at, we're making progress on Nancy Whitlock has now completed her plan to develop a map of all of the murals in town, and it's a work in progress because they're popping up every day, and so, and our website should be up very shortly, John is here, he's been working on that, we had a contractor, we had some problems, and so John is taking it over, and he says it will be up very soon, so we're also working on a logo for the Downtown Association, we have one for Heart of the Arts. That Heart of the Arts, we came up with for one of our events, and it's now, all the art community uses it, we are the heart of the arts, and so, so those things are happening. We had a very successful Harvest Moon event in September, we, Carol Farley and her students painted another mural on a dumpster wall, and Peanut has painted dumpsters, and murals are popping up all over the place, we haven't visited the alley behind the other block of Holland Avenue, I recommend you go take a look, it's changing on a daily basis, and there's some other art there, John's up at the end, statue there, and there's a lot of things, and we commissioned Stowe Reed to paint the back of the, Bill Ivey's building, the small, it's a small mural, but that's done, and so, you know, things are developing. We're also working on the, on the Performing Arts, and we had, with the Harvest Moon, we had John Ferguson, Mariachi Sautecruz, who played on the street, and then John, when he was finished, went over to the Holland Hotel, and the jazz group played, and John sat in on that, so, it was very versatile, a lot of it came on the preview, so, and we now have a brochure, it took about two months to do that, but we have a plan that we talked about, is to get more members to join, and by doing that, we can call on various businesses and say, you know, tell them about us, and we wanted something to do, we're also working on a decal that they can put on their door, we are a member of Alpine Downtown Association, to encourage membership, and Christmas in Alpine, we're all very busy with that coming up, there is a massive committee, Eric is involved, Chris, several, like Chris chairs, and there are 13 organizations putting on Christmas in Alpine, and it will run from December 3rd through most of the, well, the 19th probably is the last actual event. Part of that will be Starlight Shopping, businesses that can be open late, Free Success 30th, 35th, December 3rd, I think it's 35th, 12th, and 19th, and we'll stay open late, there's art, there's a lighting decorating contest to encourage people to light up their shops Friday for the parade, and so, and then for next year, we are looking, we're planning another Art of Arts event connected with the, in February, connected with the holiday there, so, we're, we've still have some issues, and we did talk to the Chamber of Commerce President about problems they're having with membership and so forth, she approached us at our last meeting and wanted to talk about a merger, or some kind of way of working together, and I think with a lot of help from Ricky, kind of decided that the chamber has to really work to kind of make things work, that a merger is not, is not in the cards right now, so hopefully we can find ways to help provide the chamber, so, those are some of the things we're working on, any questions?
Yeah, and there are a lot of murals going up, as a matter of fact, the whole U of L, we're getting ready to do one on the Lake of the Wall, to commemorate all the wars from World War I to present.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and we're working with the university on that one.
Oh, yeah. And I know the university wants to become involved in the city, and Bill Kibler has said this several times, so...
Yeah, to represent, Walter was there, another gentleman in there, who's also to have their Kibler on it, and we'll have some artists start viewing the wall next week.
Okay.
And it'll be part of their walk trail also, so...
Okay. Did Nancy know about it?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, see, already we have two murals, so, yeah, part of that, part of her project, with the walking tour, it's a current walking tour, except we're... tour, except it will be during the year.
And I can talk to Nancy about it.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question, Mr. Street. You mentioned the parade. Do you have any input on the parade?
What?
You mentioned the parade, the Christmas parade. Do you have input on that?
I didn't hear what.
Okay. You mentioned the Christmas parade in your talk. Do you have any input on?
On the input?
Yes.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Can I suggest no sirens? It's already in the rules. Good, thank you. I'm so tired of that.
Well, in fact, we first, we first, that's what we, I'm sorry what the event was, but we told the sirens, no sirens. I don't want a siren on the deep police car because to show the folks we're coming. But when you have twelve fire trucks in the road, all alone are sirens.
You know the decibel level on that goes up to 110.
Okay, and marching bands and other things, you want to play music, nobody can hear them because, yes, that, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And here the next one will be by Lorena for the municipal court.
Good night, everybody. In your package you have the OCA report for the last quarter of the year. And as you can see, we did escort a little bit more than 11,000 on those three months, even though we didn't have a docket on our list. We're working closely with the Alpine Police and the chief in getting the warm roundup set up for February of 2020 to see if we can get that up and running finally. Also reaching out to our collection agency, Bruton, Brandon, and Flueber Collins. So cases that are older, 2013 and older, not to pursue those because of the timeframe for collection, we're working on that as well. And also we're getting ready with Hill Country for the system to update with all the new court costs and fines according to the 86 legislative updates. So those will start, some start in September 1st, but the majority of them will start in January 1st. Any questions for me?
Positive exchanges up there.
Yes, yes.
This is good. And when you had the first round of people came and paid?
Yes. We did have a lot of calls, even people that didn't have anything to do with the court. They want to make sure they didn't have anything. So it was pretty interesting at that point.
That's good.
Yes.
That's good, because one of the biggest complaints, and I just talked to the chief a little while ago, was about speeding. I mean, I could not hear him saying like this, I can't go to the grocery store without people stopping me, saying, hey, how about this speeding and stuff like that.
At least it wasn't me this time.
No, wait, there's a gentleman that's hit me up already like four times.
Oh, man.
He says, we're working on it, we're working on it. But, you know, that's good. You know, we do have those traffic laws for, you know, everybody's safety. So bottom line, that's, that's what it's about.
So I just want to make a foot stammer. You brought in $11,000 in fines.
It was more than that. I don't have, I mean, on hand, I don't have the specific. It was more than 11,000.
Yeah, I mean, that's huge, right? Because, and the more we can talk about that, that the court is taking the right actions to make people accountable.
Yes.
That's part of the process of getting people recognized. You can go the speed, the speed you want, you're just going to pay the money, pay a charge. And that will still be around.
And that was one of my goals, our, even though we're our municipal court, people need to respect it. So in, in working closely with the Alpine Police, we're getting there. Slowly or surely, we're getting there.
And tell the Jets, thank you very much.
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Follow the report. The report was great. Thank you.
She's doing a great job.
She is.
And more comments?
More, Brad.
No sirens.
No, no.
City manager.
I'm the mayor to the council. The next item is the distribution of packet material to the council meetings to include general distribution of, for the general public prior to the meeting. One of the things that, you know, if I come back, I've heard four or five times from the people in the community is, can we have access to the material in the packet prior to the meeting? Certainly Cynthia and her team worked to get you those packets by middle of the day Friday. And I think historically, one of the reasons it wasn't shared was to give council time to not only review it ahead of time, but also there were actionable items that, that hadn't been discussed on the bench of council first. But, you know, the thought of, of how do we push more engagement with people in the community, this might be something that council wants to consider. And it may not be that we, we put it up on the website Friday afternoon, it may be 24 hours in advance, or something of that nature. Certainly items that are personnel in nature, some things would have to be redacted, but generally speaking, the majority of the packet would be available if, if council so chooses. So that's the request that's been poshed up to me, thought we might have a re-discussion and get some thoughts. Included in the packet, the ordinance that outlines the actual meeting procedures, so it would be something that we would do to amend that, to include distribution to the general public at a said time, if council so chooses.
I think it's a good idea.
No, I think it's a very, very good idea. And I don't know what the, the outcome of the redesign of this chambers will be, but again, keeping in mind where we can put up the screen that's a little bit more visible to our visiting residents, and more the use of our audio visual devices when we're sharing information, so they can also see what's going on.
So I've been paid 24 hours in advance, and for the only reason, so that we, council have an opportunity to make sure of the speed. So before we get calls, we've done our homework, and I think our plans works well. And the only decision, as you mentioned, you can act executive session. And the rest is left, put it out there.
You think you have 24 hours to go through the whole packet?
No, 24 hours before, before the meeting. So you release that, so our meeting's on 5:10 on Tuesday, you release it 5:30 on Monday. That gives us time to be able to work on the weekend wherever we're at.
City manager?
Citizens would really appreciate that. Okay. Okay, we're going to item nine, action items to be accompanied by a review saving effects including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items are limited up to 10 per meeting. After being confirmed by the mayor or mayor pro temp, citizens are required to state their names and the words which they reside, probably be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city at limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak at this time of day. And city manager.
Yes, sir. Honorable mayor, city council, first items to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the recommendations from planning and zoning application from Navi Sanchez, request for a rezoning from R4 to C1 for food pantry, legal description being all of blocks six and seven in the south, 83.07 feet of block three, four, and five, block 34, and condition to Alpine South Railway, according to the plaque recorded in Slide 122, Black Records, Brewster County, Texas. Record owner is Navi Sanchez, and we did have a public carry notice earlier, see if we can wait until call.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I propose that we approve the recognition from planning zoning to the Navi Sanchez request for rezoning of R1 to C1 for the food pantry, legal description is required.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion?
The, the only discussion I have is, this is, requires, this is an ordinance, so this is the first reading.
First reading.
The second reading will be December 10th. I'd like to amend by motion that we approve the first reading on the recommendation for the zoning of the restaurants.
Okay.
Can I second that?
Yeah, it's been seconded. Okay. Any discussion on that amendment? None? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
One question, Mr. Stevens. What is a food pantry? Is it a store? What is the food pantry?
Food distribution.
Oh, okay. Distribution. I didn't understand that.
Item number two, honorable mayor, city council, is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of ordinance 2019-11-02, sale of property of .09 acres of property of the 1,000 block west Lockhart Avenue, west of 14th Street, the South Orient Railroad, and the unapproved portion of West Lockhart Avenue, north of block five, block one, Walton Second Edition to the city of Alpine Brewster County, Texas, to Mr. Ned Allen, 603 North Cherry Street.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve ordinance 2019-11-02 regarding the sale of .09 acres of property as designated with the sale price of being $1,400.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in the second. Any discussion? Okay, seen none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. City manager.
Honorable mayor, city council, item three, is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to adopt resolution 2019-11-14 authorizing the designated signatories for the Texas CBVG contract number 7217000. I guess it means the primary signature.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve the adoption of resolution 2019-11-14 authorizing, city manager to sign the Texas CBVG contract 7217000.
Okay. Motion's been made in the second. Any discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Honorable mayor, city council, item four is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action according to section 4 dot 02A of the city charter requesting city council's consent of hiring for the department acquisition of public works. Mr. Eddie Bolinar is being recommended as a public works director. Eddie has sat here patiently this evening. And, you know, I would say that in our career, we have points of time where we work with people that are true professionals and do a fantastic job, and care about the people around them, and care about the community. And I think that embodies Mr. Bolinar. He's well-deserving of the role. Super glad to have him on the team.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council enthusiastically support the city manager's recommendation in providing and providing consent for the hiring of their department of public works.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in the second. Any discussion? And I've got just something to say about that. You do a great job out there. You're putting your team together, and you're training them, and so it's outstanding, because I've gone and get out there a couple of times, check with you guys, and see how things are going. Everything is really working well over there, so that leads, I mean, that's up to the leadership, and that's you, the leader of the department, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
He has hung so many Christmas lights.
Is a remote work.
A thousand.
Yes, okay. It's a remote work. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, enthusiastically. Okay. Oppose? Okay, very good. Motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable mayor, city council, item number five, is to discuss, consider and take appropriate
action to adopt resolution 2019-11-16 authorizing Alpine to register as the Texas music friendly status for the music friendly community. Mr. Chris Rugia presented to us last week. We have that resolution in the packet, financial binding or obligation. We'll do the tasking as outlined in the resolution with our staff between Chris and myself and our, our visitor center. Also in your packet was, we will form a order committee, there was some suggested folks there, so when we come back to that either on December 10th or January 7th, we'll have that lined up for you as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose the city council, free margin, resolution 2019-11-16 authorizing Alpine to be registered as the Texas music friendly status for the music friendly committee. And thank Chris Rugia for helping to lead this to make it happen.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made in the second. Chris, you want to speak on it?
If you want me to, I'm happy to. But I covered it mostly last time, so I don't have a lot to add, except the addition is the names of some suggested folks to serve on the board, or some alternates in case you can't do it. That's really, unless you have questions.
And I had a gentleman, his name is Larry, he's working with the Alpine School District on that project. And he was telling me about, he was trying to get together with someone about bringing in some more musics, and he was out here. So I was just referring to you then.
Please do, thank you.
Anything else?
I just think it's a nice list for the draft music advisory board as well. It doesn't make me under.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number six.
So this is me to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the first reading, amending the state ordinance on chapter 10, section 118, and section 10-60, amending these ordinances as recommended by the animal advisory board. And we just wanted to add a couple of things to the ordinance. I don't know if you want me to read them, or if you guys already wrote them.
I agree with him.
You did, okay.
I was thinking about that down the street.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion's made in the second. So any discussion?
Is it a lengthy, is it a lengthy thing that you're adding, or?
Do you want me to read it?
If you give her a point, I'm just curious what it is.
Okay, there's, there's two, there's two different things that we wanted, that we were asked to add.
You want me to share that with you?
Sure.
Sure.
That way.
That'd be great.
Do you have, you?
Thank you, Cynthia.
Jennifer, do you have anything you want to? Unless there's questions, okay.
Now, what it does is it adds authority to Jennifer and her team to take care of animals that are being problematic here.
All right.
Does that satisfy your care?
It does. It does, thank you. I just, my favorite questions are why and why not?
Okay. Not a problem. Anybody else? Okay, motion's been made in the second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, item number 10. It's the council member comments and answers. I think I'll start with this this time.
Congratulations, Eddie.
Thank you.
That's great. And thanks, everyone, for being here, and thanks for the, it's nice to have the dialogue and the discussion in a way that I think is helpful for across the community. So, thanks.
I wanted to say happy birthday to Eric. Happy birthday.
And of course, congratulations. And congratulations to Eddie. You're doing a great job. I see all the work you're doing. I keep pictures and send them to Eric. And congratulations, and I'm glad that y'all are all here. That's very important. I don't care how many questions you ask, I'm comfortable with it here. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We need that. And.
You're good.
Well, thank everybody for coming. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, everybody, for coming, and the very best of a Thanksgiving season.
Thank you, guys, and congratulations, and have a good holiday.
Okay. Want to thank each and every one of you. Eddie, again, congratulations. And just keep doing the prime work you're doing. Okay? And also, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and be safe out there, okay? Want to see you at the next meeting.
Your cap.
I have one comment, sort of in the curiosity corner. As a young lawyer in El Paso, I represented a man who confessed to like 300 people named Henry Lucas.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
I got him off. The charge is dismissed, and December sixth, Netflix is airing a five-part series on that. So, see what the city turned into as a young lawyer.
Thank you, Ted.
You get a dinner where they?
It's called a confession joint.
Okay.
So, uh, with that nod, uh, I propose that the city council move into the executive session to cover two items, uh, that are listed on the agenda, and that's consistent with Texas government code fifty-five one dot zero seven one, consultation attorney of fifty-five F one dot zero seven four, here for personal.
I'll second.
Okay, city manager.
Who, who seconded that?
Eddie.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the recommendation of the city manager to provide, uh, additional compensation for Darryl LaSoya during his three months that he was the interim chief of police, uh, in the form of a cash compensation for ten thousand dollars and two weeks additional, uh, leave.
I second.
Okay, motion's made in the second. Any discussion? I don't think there should be. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, light sign. Passes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I move in the case of the, uh, EEOC matter that, uh, council provide authority to the city manager and the city attorney to, uh, resolve the issue.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, light sign.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Second on that one, and that'll be faithful.